Yeah, I don't think it'd be a big deal. Hey Donna, don't leave, please. Can you get me back there as well? No, I'm trying to get back to the agenda. Oh, there we go, okay. There we go. Alright, so I can get rid of this now. And I don't need this, do I? Oh, okay. We have that. My ESPN stuff. It is, because I think Cardinals are playing right now. Hey, Arkansas won fourteen to one today.
Let's get going, guys.
Alright.
Okay, so what do we got, the CUPs first? Alright. I don't know if we're ready or not. Where's my control man?
He said whenever you're ready.
Okay.
Bill's here, so.
We're ready, alright. Hello, everybody, and welcome to the St. Charles County Council Meeting of June tenth, two thousand nineteen. Tonight, we have with us Mr. Bill Sontog from Harvester Christian Church to lead us in the invocation, and then followed by Dave Hammond to lead us in the pledge. Everybody rise.
Dear Heavenly Father, it has been an honor to do these invocations the last few meetings, Father, and it's an honor to come to you now. It's an honor to know, Father God, that you hear this prayer and that you have the ability to answer this prayer, which gives you the ultimate power, Father, and we are thankful for that. We're thankful, first of all, that the power is in your hands, not ours. But, Father, I do ask diligently for wisdom, strength, for everyone in this room, for those that are making decisions in this room, for those that are leading other people in this room, Father. We know that you have put people in place to do that, not only to honor you, but to honor them and to honor those that they are leading. So, Father, please give them the strength, the courage, and wisdom that they need. Father, I pray for this city, each and every district. I pray for this county. I pray for this state, for this wonderful country, and for this world that you've created, Father. We are so thankful to be in it, we are so thankful to be part of it. But, most of all, Father, we are thankful that you're a God that loves us, that cares for us, and that allows us to have an intimate relationship with you. Bless these proceedings, Father God, like only you can. I pray all this in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May I have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Cronin.
Here.
Councilmember Brazel.
Here.
Councilmember Ehlum.
Here.
Councilmember White.
Here.
Councilmember Hammond.
Here.
Councilmember Hollander.
Here.
Councilmember Klinghammer.
Here.
Very good. Next, we have conditional use permits, beginning with bill number forty-seven fifteen.
Bill number forty-seven fifteen, an ordinance granting conditional use permit, C U R nineteen dash zero-two B, for self-storage or mini warehouses to KJ Storage LLC, property owner.
I'd like to mention that approved and signed minutes from the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting has been added to Exhibit B, and that Exhibit C has been timely received and posted. However, there's a small correction in the findings of fact and conclusions of the law. So, I'd like to ask that a motion be made to clarify that.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to correct the erroneous references to correspondence in Exhibit C as follows. One, in paragraph thirty-eight, remove the reference. I notice of right and offer of compensation, route in slash Hopewell intersection, parcel number twenty-nine dated four seventeen nineteen. And B, replace with the reference. I notice a project route in slash Hopewell intersection dash parcel number twenty-nine and thirty, correspondence dated March twenty-ninth, two thousand and nineteen. Also, in paragraph thirty-nine, add reference to notice of right and offer of compensation, route in slash Hopewell intersection, parcel number twenty-nine dated four seventeen nineteen.
That motion has been made, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, is there a voice vote on this, or a roll call vote?
Voice vote, voice vote.
Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Seeing none, it has passed.
Thanks for not making me read that again.
Okay, moving on to bill forty-seven fifteen.
Bill number forty-seven fifteen, an ordinance granting conditional use permit, C U R nineteen dash zero-two B, for self-storage or mini warehouses to KJ Storage LLC, property owner.
Any questions or comments, gentlemen?
I have comment. I'm, as I stated before, I'm opposed to this. We've had quite a few letters and statements of opposition from the people who live in the area. I think there's people out there that are from the area that are also here for, to oppose it. So, I'd just like to say that it's not, it's not congruent with the area. There's no, there's no commercial property that bets up against it. This is a rural area that has horse farms and rolling hills, and I know the matter, what the master plan says, but it's just not there yet. This would be put in a commercial, industrial-looking situation, right in the middle of farm country, and it's just not good for the people who live out there and have to drive by it every day. So, I will, I'm opposed to this.
Okay. Any other comments? Seeing none?
Councilman Brazel.
No.
Councilman Ehlum.
No.
Councilman White.
No.
Councilman Hammond.
No.
Councilman Hollander.
No.
Councilman Klinghammer.
No.
Councilman Cronin.
No.
Bill forty-seven fifteen has failed, and so we'll move on to bill forty-seven twenty-nine.
Bill number forty-seven twenty-nine, an ordinance granting conditional use permit, C U P nineteen dash zero-one, for a storage lot for trailers, recreational vehicles, and boats to Jerry and Kim Lindeman and Orchard Farm RV School District property owners.
Any questions or comments?
We'll need Planning and Zoning, Mr. Myers, to do his thing. Do you solemnly swear that you will tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
And he'll give a review.
Okay, please give us a second.
Thank you, this is a conditional use permit request for fifty fifty-five North Highway ninety-four. Again, for a storage lot for trailers, recreational vehicles, and boats. The property is about five acres, and you may know it as the St. Charles County Co-op property. They're proposing to keep the Co-op buildings, but behind that have outdoor storage on a gravel storage lot. The property's owned light industrial, it's been zoned that way for years, and surrounding properties are also zoned industrial on the west side of Highway ninety-four, on the east side of Highway ninety-four, they're zoned commercial. There is one residence to the north of this property on Railroad Avenue that's mixed with some light industrial properties. And adjoining that residence, the applicants are proposing to do a landscape buffer, industrial-type landscape buffer, including a screen fence and landscaping as well. Now, the applicants include the Lindeman's and Orchard Farm School District. The reason Orchard Farm District is involved is because they own a strip of land along the south that would be traded once, if this conditional use permit should be approved, and that would be incorporated within the RV storage lot. It's my understanding from the applicant, Vax Engineering, excuse me, the applicant's representative with Vax Engineering, that Orchard Farm School District is proposing a bus storage lot adjoining this to the south, and they're proposing that sometime this year. That was the testimony at Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. I also might mention that the Fire District, the Firehouse along ninety-four would share a driveway with this facility and the school district and the Fire District. So, one of the two driveways would be shared access between those three entities, that's the proposal. The Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing on this application at its May fifteenth, two thousand and nineteen meeting. There were two speakers in support, zero against. We did receive two letters of opposition, and following the public hearing, the Planning and Zoning Commission unanimously recommended approval of the CUP subject to certain recommended conditions that are intended to address potential land use impacts for neighbors. And the county staff concurs with this recommendation as conforming to the conditional use permit criteria of section four oh five point five ten B of the county code.
Are there any questions to the staff?
Mr. Jim?
Yes.
Does Orchard Farm School District need to comply with our zoning to park school buses?
When they make a proposal, we can evaluate it at that time, but they haven't applied for any permits from us. And so, we do have, in our zoning code, that institutions, including schools, are classified as institutions. But, we haven't reviewed the question of whether or not they're subject to our zoning.
Okay. But, we'll find out. Alright. Is the applicant here? Please come forward. Can you come up and be sworn in?
Do you solemnly swear that you will tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Alright.
Good evening, members of the council, my name is Cliff Heitman with Vax Engineering Company on behalf of Jerry and Kim Lindeman, who are also with me here this evening. So, if you have operational questions, they'd be happy to, to address those. I think Mr. Myers' staff did a good job of covering the details of the project. Those of you that are familiar with the area, the Co-op building that's been there has been in existence for, for a long time, as long as I can remember, and I've been around fifty-plus years now, so it's been in, it's been in play for quite a while. The uses have changed over the years. Most recently, it was a Co-op and an ag center. The areas that are in, in behind the buildings, as you can see there, in the gravel areas, and some of those that will be replaced, the grass with gravel, had been used for different things over the years, some repair yards, some storage yards. There at one time were some, some tanks and things in the back, back there where they had different chemicals and sheds and those sorts of things. The Lindeman's acquired the property, are still maintaining the, the building in the front, which is primarily a convenience store, general store. It's got just about one of everything, I think. So, if you need some hardware or some, or that sort of thing, and you live in that area, it's, it's a nice convenience for the folks out there. They're looking to, to repurpose again the rear of that property with a storage facility for recreational trailers, boats, and some, and RVs. If you've been to the site, you may see a few of those stored there now, simply on an emergency basis, as they're dealing with some, some flooding down in that area. Obviously, we did talk with county staff about that, and they were okay with that. So, we weren't jumping the gun if you were out on the site. We weren't assuming that we were going to have approval, but those were just placed there, basically, as a convenience to the, to the community. Part of the site, as we mentioned, the southern portion of that, there's a portion of that property that's currently now owned by the R-five School District, Orchard Farm School District. These two entities have been working in cooperation, as Orchard Farm is, is working through plans and kind, contemplating plans for a bus depot facility just to the south on eight acres. What would be accomplished with that is there'd be an entryway, a concrete entrance just to the north of the fire hall, which is the white square you see toward the bottom of the building. That's the Orchard Farm Volunteer Fire District. So, there'd be a, an entrance there, shared, that would then go past the Orchard Farm Fire District building and then turn south. That would be the access point for the bus facility. It would provide a secondary access point for this storage facility. And then also, it provides an access point for the Fire District, their equipment. They have a little, a tough time getting some of that through now, as equipment sizes have changed over the years. They basically have to pull it in one side and back it out the other. So, it's kind of helps all the entities involved there in terms of some cooperation. In exchange for those two pieces, or they're swapping those two pieces of ground, which is why Orchard Farm is listed on this application as well, because there would be a strip that the Lindeman's would acquire to the south over there in exchange for, for this entry drive. As staff mentioned, industrial zoning on the properties and surrounding, to the east is Highway ninety-four. There is commercial zoning east of that, but it's primarily agriculturally used. That's a farm field that sits down lower in the floodplain. Just to the north, there is, again, some commercial industrial use of an insurance facility and some other heavier uses. There is one residence there that was discussed. We are providing landscaping along that northern property line, as you can see, in the area where the, the residential house is, in addition to some screen fencing there as well. We did meet with staff, talked about the water quality that we'd be providing for the site. We would be developing this in phases. We have talked with MoDOT primarily, or preliminarily already, regarding the entrance and access points, and they have given us conceptual approval on that. So, we feel confident if we were granted this conditional use permit, we can move forward with that. With that, we would have to answer any questions. As mentioned, the owners are here, if you have operational questions that I can't address about the site.
Is there any questions, this witness?
I have just one. The, the chemical tanks that are there, are they empty now, not being used anymore?
This is actually a dated photograph, Mr. Cronin, those tanks are gone.
Okay.
Yeah, the only thing that exists there in the back is that smaller shed, but those tanks have been removed. This, the foundations are there at this point, but they're gone.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
So, Cliff, is that, that's currently zoned commercial or industrial, is what you said?
That's commercially, it's currently zoned industrial, light industrial, I want.
Okay.
Is there, are there any other questions of this witness? Anybody in the audience? Seeing none, may be excused.
Thank you.
And we have one speaker, Arne Deanhoff.
Do you solemnly swear that you will tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Yes, I do. Thank you very much, members of the county council. My name is Arne C. A.C. Deanhoff, civic and public advocate. And I have some comments about this, as I do most storage facilities within our county. I think that we need, as a county council, to have the county director of planning and his staff come up with minimal standards to apply and be applicable to all storied, outside storage units. I think that some of them abut residential dwellings. They need to be held to some type of responsibility and accountability, some time of minimal standards, and maintenance of their properties. In my, in this case, on the ninety-four property, I'd like to see a mixture, and I think the applicant talked about the berm on the property. So, the berm, is it high enough, is my question? Is there a total secure fence around the entire part of the property so students at the school district don't gain access? The attractive fence part needs to front the residential dwelling, abutting this property, to keep up their property values, since they were there first, and the storage lot is coming second. Security and keyed access to the property, as that came up in the Hopewell unit and other units or applications throughout the county, we need to make sure that, that there's a secure fence, and there's no openings, and there's a key access. And hopefully, they have cameras to protect people's belongings. Also, at this property, I think the landscaping is in question. Is there the proper landscaping to protect the adjoining property owners, and especially that residential dwelling? The lighting, we need to make sure that we're not polluting the lights on the adjoining properties, and that that lighting or the lumens are just put down on that particular, this applicant's property. And, of course, I always ask, and have always, and have asked county staff to make sure, and I think the county council needs to add the following conditions. One, that no derelict vehicles are allowed whatsoever on the property. Number two, no unlicensed vehicles that are not roadworthy, that no licensed boats or derelict trailers are allowed on the property. That there's no outside storage of any kind. And when I mean that, I mean parts, gatherings, wagons, things that are stored outside. And the last thing is that there are no parts of any kind. Unfortunately, some people, or I guess fortunately, it's like you get on a development boom, but some people use these storage sheds as their business operations. And if you look around the county, both the municipalities and unincorporated St. Charles County, there's some places where there's accumulation of parts for various different businesses, whether it's a landscaping business or an auto business. But, we want to make sure that we keep it clean, attractive, and keep up our property values at these storage units. So, I appreciate you listening to me and taking those additional conditions into consideration. Thank you.
You may be, any questions, others?
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Did you attend a planning zoning meeting on this particular item?
I did not, Mr. Hammond, because I was sick that night.
Okay.
But, the other ones I have.
Any other questions? Seeing none, you may be excused.
Thank you.
Are there any other comments? Well, then I close the public hearing on this and move on to bill number forty-seven thirty.
Bill number forty-seven thirty, an ordinance granting conditional use permit, C U R nineteen dash zero-three B, for landscaping contracting services to Hellman Bryan Road LLC, property owner, and KF Landscapes LLC applicant.
And I would say that you're still under oath.
Okay. Okay. Proceed.
Briefly, this is actually two applications that are both related. Again, one is a rezoning request from residential to commercial, and two, a conditional use permit that would allow a landscape contracting yard. Both of these are on your agenda for tonight's consideration. So, there, there are two different actions, two different bills, but they're both linked. The property is on Bryan Road, less than a mile south of I seventy. So, it's between Veterans Memorial Parkway and Mexico Road. It's completely surrounded by the jurisdiction of the city of Fallon, so it's a little less than five acres. It's a very deep lot. It goes from Bryan Road, there's a, you might call a steep drop-off of about eight feet right after it leaves the right-of-way, goes down to a house, and then it falls into, I guess it's called Bello Creek, if I'm pronouncing it right, which is all on the east part of this property. So, it's the western part of the property relatively flat, and then the eastern part of the property is more flood-prone and very heavily wooded. And it's a very deep lot, so it doesn't necessarily have a lot of frontage on Bryan Road, but those are the characteristics of the property itself. Adjoining this to the south, Pascale Court, there's a residential neighborhood, and the homes that are built on that street are very close to the south property line, fifteen to twenty feet. The homes themselves are probably fifteen to twenty feet south of the property line. These homes have a wood screen fence, but that's, that's all the separation there is between this property and the, and the homes in the south. To the north of this property, on the other hand, you find commercial properties, includes a dog grooming business, a daycare. Across the street, you have a bakery. And really, between Veterans Memorial Parkway and Mexico Road, there is a mixture of more heavier commercial, and neighborhood commercial, and some residential as well. So, there is some, some mixture of uses along this route. The master plan calls for this particular property for medium-density residential, future land uses for this property, but it calls for a commercial property, uh, future land uses just to the north. So, the master plan recognizes also that the corridor is not necessarily going to be one solid, particular land use. Currently, what would be allowed would be apartments to be constructed, conceivably. If apartments were built, it would require some screening between that, that building and the residents of the south. Likewise, if this property became a contractor, landscape contractor yard, screening would be required, required to the property of the south. A concept plan was submitted for your review, and it's part of the packet. The concept plan includes the idea that the, a parking lot would be built towards the front. The house would be converted to an office, and then landscaped the area, and then a storage yard. So, the storage yard would be behind the house, which would become the office. Storage yard would include a new storage building, but then also some outdoor bins for things like mulch, rock, and et cetera. All of the development that's proposed in this concept plan will be limited to the western half of the property, and the eastern half will remain natural. That's the idea behind the concept plan. The Planning and Zoning Commission, after reviewing this application, recommended in favor of approval with certain conditions to address the land use impacts for neighbors. And one of those conditions was to have a heightened level of separation between this potential use and the residents of the south. What I mean a heightened level, what they call a type-three landscape buffer, which would be normally for industrial properties in the county, which would include a fence and a landscaped buffer yard. So, after holding the public hearing, Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval with certain conditions, and county staff concurs with this recommendation.
Very good. Questions?
Yes. Last year, we reviewed this same property where they were going to put villas in there, correct?
That's correct, yes.
So, I mean, we approved the villas that were supposed to go in there, and I guess that deal fell through. But, I mean, I, I could see this property from my house. And actually, the residential homes along there are, are up higher, because this, this property's like down in the hole. Unless you really, when you're going down Bryan Road, unless you actually looked down in there, you couldn't even know, you didn't even know there was a house there. So, and I had the opportunity to meet this gentleman out at the property, and I think what he's proposing to do, I don't have a problem with it. And he expressed concerns that he was going to move the areas where they would load and stuff to the far west. And so, I didn't have any concerns, and it's quite wooded, quite a bit of it's wooded there, although some of the trees are dead, need to be removed, and he had planned to do that. But, I, I would be supportive of this proposal.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
John, you got an opinion on this? Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I just want to note for the record that the Exhibit B attached is referencing the previous project. So, I would just make a request that we continue this hearing and till the next meeting, and we would provide the proper exhibits at that point, and continue the hearing at, at that point.
So, you recommend that we conclude at this point?
We would conclude the hearing at this point, and continue it at the next session.
Do we need a motion on that?
Yes.
So moved.
Second?
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Okay, it has been continued till next meeting.
Just so everyone understands, we, there's a computer malfunction. We don't have the information, so we can't publicly talk about it. We don't know what we're talking about.
It's not on the, it wasn't posted to the public either, so. I thought I was going crazy, Dave, thanks for straightening that, because I remember this property coming through before.
Yeah.
And then I'm looking at the, the attachment, and it's for the storage in Orchard Farm. I'm thinking, whoa, something's, so just a little technical error, we'll get it straightened out for next meeting. Thank you.
The summary is correct.
Yeah.
It says the other part.
The other parts.
Alright. So, this, this won't be open for public comment tonight?
Yes, we'll, we'll continue the hearing, just, it'd just be a continuance of this hearing.
Oh, okay. Alright, seeing that.
Mr. Chairman, in all due respect, you advertise first day law that this is a public hearing. I'm here to testify.
Johnny.
We've already determined that we're going to conclude it.
Right, the, the, this hearing is going- This hearing is going to be continued, and witnesses can, can testify.
Come back at the next meeting.
Correct.
So, to be clear, we're not concluding, we're continuing.
We're continuing.
So we're just holding that portion of this over to the next meeting due to a lack of information.
Correct.
So, that gets us through.
Go ahead. I'm sorry, I stepped on you.
Sorry, my bad.
So what we're doing, we're concluding 4730, but going to continue it at the next meeting, and any public comments can be heard at that time.
Recessing.
Okay? Moving forward, we go on into public comments. This is a time where anybody comes forward to the county council and speak on any topic. Once a topic has been determined, we allow three speakers pro and three speakers con. Is there anybody who's signed up?
Lori Giannini.
How are you?
Good.
As you said, my name's Lori Giannini, and I live at 4464 Greens Bottom Road. I was here at the last meeting and spoke about the water that lays along the side of the road because of the poor planning and execution of the raising of that road. Now, right now, we have a lot of water down there, as you know. The Missouri River has decided she's angry, and she came out of her banks because the Mississippi's not cooperating to let her dump. So we have a lot of water. But the problem we've seen right now is, on part of that road, it's closed because there's a lot of water on the road, and it's not safe. Yes, it's because the Missouri's up and it's not allowing the drainage ditch to dump. The problem is, is there was already water in those ditches. There was no place for that water to go, so once the Missouri stopped it from being able to drain, which it wasn't doing in the first place, the Missouri River decided to join it and come through there. And it made it even worse. So we need to address the fact that that drainage ditch that they put in doesn't work, and it's causing a lot of issues down there. I know there's very few people that live down there, but I do. Okay? I do. And I care about what it is down there, and how it looks, and how my lifestyle's affected because I have water laying all over the place all the time, I have mosquitoes breeding all the time. We need to look at what they did and find a way to fix it, because it is nothing but a mess. You guys wasted your money when you hired the company that did all this, because the engineers told myself and my husband, who's a fairly bright man, he was a teacher for 20-something years, that we didn't know what we were talking about when we told them that it's not right. You can stand there and look, there is no grade. The road and the ditch are the same level, and they go that way, all the way down the road. And it's just an awful mess. And right now, I would really appreciate your help, guys. If you could get the county health department to do something about spraying for mosquitoes, because the river's going down, we're going to have a whole lot of puddles, and we're going to have a whole lot of mosquitoes, worse than what we already had. And we've already got the buffalo nets, which are awful, too. But the mosquitoes are going to be even worse. And it's not going to just affect my little spot, it's going to affect everybody that's on that Katy Trail. It's going to affect every animal that's on that Katy Trail with their owners. It's going to affect everybody that lives down the road.
Mr. Chairman, the three minutes are up.
So, if you could please do that, I would really be appreciative. Thank you very much, gentlemen.
Thank you. Next speaker?
Arne Dinoff.
Thank you very much, members of council. My name is Arne C. A.C. Dinoff, civic and public advocate. Last meeting you passed, and you went against the grain of our state legislature in taking away the state's sales tax holiday that our 440,000 residents depend on. I'm asking that somebody in the yes group, which is allowed under Robert's Rules of Order, reconsider bill 4173 and allow the sales tax holiday to continue. Every dollar is needed for our families with back-to-education needs, both college, university, and schools throughout our public school system. Our county's economic fairness is at jeopardy. The fairness to small businesses who've ordered their inventories, Mr. Elam says, year after year. I'm asking that somebody do the right thing, reconsider this, because you're the one of the few governments in the state of Missouri to bash it back to the residents and take away the sales tax holiday in August. On the agenda, under the consent agreement, Duck Creek Sanitary District, finally, we have a resident that's not associated with the county executive, or a member of Mr. Elman's cabinet. Three of the five current members are cabinet members of the county executive, including Greg Dorman, who's sitting in the back, the associate county counselor, which is a conflict of interest, including Bob Schnarr, the director of finance under the county executive, which is a conflict of interest. And Don Bamer, retired about two years ago as the assistant director of administration, who held pole positions while being paid on the taxpayer, on the taxpayer roles, has a conflict of interest. Resolution 1902, our scientists, we have three scientists and other staff members, I believe there's other, there's two other supporting staff members, do outstanding work, not just in the Anze Hausmann case, which I'm indebted to them, but each and every day, they work under stressful conditions. They're responsible and timely, and a timely staff. They worked every day under terrible conditions, and I give them a huge plaud of congratulations in the cases that they solved for us. Bill number 46, 4716, I ask that you defeat this. This rezoning of this land is not the place for another storage lot on Hope Bowl Road in a rural residential setting. I ask that you defeat this bill. Bill number 4721, regulating the sale of kratom and requiring a kratom seller permit. We need to protect the children and make sure that no sales go to any children under the age of 18, and I applaud you for doing that. Bill number 4725, the Great Streets Project, another pet project. We don't even own that roadway. That's owned by Moda, Missouri Department of Transportation, but yet we're going to give $675,000 on a plan. So what does that mean? The project's going to be 20, 30 million dollars? We need roads that are falling apart, not benches and sidewalks.
Mr. Chairman, the three minutes are up.
And $1.5 million gateway green light program, say no. And it'll be one minute here, or 10 seconds. The $88,000 is a waste on bill number 4728 for a road that we don't even own. What about the weeds and trash on I-64, I-370, I-364, 94, and 79? I ask that you not approve this bill. It's a waste of money. We don't own the road. Thank you.
Thank you, Arne. Are there any public comments?
No, there are not.
Okay. Well, concludes this portion for public comments, and move on to our oral report by the county executive Elman.
Mr. Chairman, I think for the last week, we've had the Red Cross here in town, and went over and looked at their operation. Mike, I'm sorry, I can't remember your last name.
Brown.
Mike Brown is here to give us a little update on what you've been doing the last week, and what you have, what you have for us to look forward to in terms of serving the people that have been affected by the, by the flooding. Want to thank you, and we had people over there from all over the country.
We did. And we do.
And I appreciate it, and give us a little update on what's going on.
Thank you very much, Steve. I'll be brief. Thanks for the opportunity for me to speak tonight. My name's Mike Brown with the American Red Cross. My day-to-day job is the executive director of the South Alabama Chapter of the Red Cross in Mobile, Alabama. And my role here on this job, in this disaster relief operation, is to work with the elected leadership in the area of the disaster, to make sure that you know what the Red Cross offers, and to make sure that I know what your constituents need, so we can make sure all the family's needs are met. So what I'd like to do is just talk a little bit about the numbers we have so far, and what the first number I'd like to talk about is, what Steve alluded to, was the, the big team of people that are in town to help. It's, it's over 400 people from out of town, 90%, over 90% are volunteers. And he mentioned the shelter team down at the, at the shelter down the street at the St. John Church of Christ. The shelter manager is actually from Seattle, and she's missing her 53rd wedding anniversary to be here. So she's one of, I met a shelter team from Oregon, one was from California, and one's from Alaska. So we got folks from all over in here to help. So far, we've served 19,400 meals. We've given out 3,400 relief items, which means the cleanup kits that help people clean up their, their house, comfort kits, which are the toiletries and the toys for the children, rakes, shovels, coolers, all those things. We've given out those, both from general sites and also on box trucks and our emergency response vehicles. We've done over 1,300 shelter stays, and we have nine shelters open in the area, including the one down, down the road. Now, that's what we've done so far, and that's what we're doing currently. And with the flood, it's frustrating because you don't know what's going to happen when the water goes down. So right now, we're in the stage of waiting for the waters to recede, and what we'll do then is we'll go in and do what we call damage assessment. Again, these volunteers go in, they, they assess destroyed, major, minor, and affected, and get our arms around what the rest of the relief operation will look like, and then we'll go in and distribute more, more bulk distribution. We'll do street feeding with the emergency response vehicles, and folks go back into their homes, and, and we'll be here until it's over. This is my 40th deployment. It's my first one in Missouri. It's a, it's a wonderful community. I'm sorry this, this happened to you, but the Red Cross usually is one of the first ones here, and we're committed to stay till, till we're no longer needed. So, and, and just as a more of a local point, just last night, we had 14 house fires in our region, and four in greater, four house fires in greater St. Louis just, just yesterday. And local disaster action team members who respond every day to fires responded to those separate from this operation. So Red Cross is real busy, and we're here, and we'll be here till you, till you no longer need us. Does anybody have any questions?
I just want to thank you for your service. People ask me where I got my damage assessment experience before. I did the damage assessment from '93, and I got it working for the Red Cross, so.
Is that right? That's terrific.
As a volunteer, so.
Thank you.
Very good. Appreciate all your efforts.
Absolutely.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you, Mike.
Mr. Brown, thank you so much, and what your organization do. Thank you.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I'd also like Captain Hunt, just to give everybody an update on kind of where we are in terms of EMA.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm going to try to give you a rundown of, there's been a lot of questions on damage assessment, and how it works with SEMA and FEMA, and I hope I can answer most of those questions all at once for you guys tonight. If you have any questions, please don't hesitate to interrupt me. So this is a, this is a map from the USGS of what the rivers look like on a daily basis when we're not in flood stage. This is what they look like this morning. So as you can see, the northern end of the county, the northeastern end of the county is completely inundated with floodwaters along the Mississippi. And as you can see, it goes up, that's right around Highway 79, you can see Old Monroe up there. Actually, Highway 79 just opened up at 4 o'clock today, so the water is receding at about 12 inches a day, which is good news. We hope that it'll be back in a moderate, Mississippi will be back in moderate stage by the end of the week. So that's just a glimpse of what it really looks like out there. So our response, from a police department's perspective, is we, when the water really topped the levee, we had an increased amount of calls for burglaries and lootings. So we immediately deployed officers up to West Alton and Portage de Sou, and they've been up there working 24 hours a day, around the clock, both in the water and on the dry spots surrounding the areas, keeping sightseers and gawkers out. We've had a real aggressive approach to keeping people out that don't, that don't live there and don't belong there. We've been assisted by the Missouri State Highway Patrol, Water Patrol. They've been a huge asset to us. They've put two boats in the water up there every single day, and we got calls last night that they were out last night because there was reports of river pirates out in the water, circling houses looking for looters. So they were out there till 3, 4 o'clock this morning navigating those waters. It's, it's extremely dangerous out there, in the daytime, much less the nighttime, so. So as the waters recede, we're going to see folks wanting to get back in there to clean things up and do damage assessment. So the way that this works is, the county executive declares a disaster in the county, and it's usually followed by the governor. In this instance, the governor declared the state a disaster because of all the tornadoes and the sinkholes and the severe weather around the state. So the governor was a little bit ahead of us when he did that. Nonetheless, the county executive declares a disaster, and that's when we get notice from the state emergency management agency to start collecting numbers on damage. So we have to report these so that we can get a declaration for public assistance and individual assistance. And for those of you who don't know the difference, public assistance is basically, in a nutshell, assistance to public entities, local governments, levy districts, public safety agencies, some nonprofit organizations. They're all eligible to apply for grant programs when public assistance is granted. The other kind is individual assistance, which that's what our citizens and business owners will apply for. The SBA is heavily involved in the damage assessment process and offering low-interest loans, et cetera, when a disaster's been declared. So once we give the numbers to SEMA, they send them up to FEMA. And in order to meet the thresholds, the state has to have at least $8 million in damage, or the county has to have $1.3 million in damage. We met both of those very quickly since April 29th. So that's why we've been gathering numbers, because the state of emergency, or the disaster's been declared by the governor. So what happens from there is FEMA, it's not that they don't believe us, but they want to come down and verify the numbers for themselves. So what they do is they deploy members from FEMA, along with SEMA, the SBA, state and local agencies, to do joint PDAs, preliminary damage assessments, and they will gather the numbers to send back up to the President of the United States. So with every disaster, FEMA changes, and they change the process. And I don't know if that's just because some things don't work, or they just want to adjust things to make it more efficient, but this go-around, they're really pushing to do aerial damage assessment. We are pushing back, saying, that's really not going to cover those folks who are completely underwater. You're not going to be able to get a view of the actual damages on the ground. So the teams are actually in Missouri right now, and they were flying today, not out here in St. Charles County. We don't know when they'll be here in St. Charles County. They're flying other parts of the state, looking at tornado damage. I did hear that they were in Jeff City today. So nonetheless, the, once we get the, the damage assessment done, whether it's aerial or ground, they submit the numbers to the President of the United States, and then from there, it's determined whether a declaration is made or not. We do expect a declaration to be made here in Missouri, just because of the monetary damages and the people that have been affected by these natural disasters. So once they do declare, FEMA sets up a local disaster recovery center, and that's where they, our folks and citizens can go out, get low-interest loans, grant applications, housing assistance, then get services that are not covered by insurance given to them. Also, the public assistance, there'll be a kickoff meeting with local governments and levy districts and police and fire, every public entity that's been affected by this, to discuss what services and programs are available to repair a lot of roads and bridges and buildings and all sorts of infrastructure. So we expect that to be in a few weeks. Some private organizations or nonprofit organizations that are really active in the disasters is the COAD, churches, the American Red Cross, the Salvation Army, CERT teams, of course, all the volunteers that come out when these things happen, and the United Way. So what we do is, when we receive these calls from folks, we put them in touch with the American Red Cross or the United Way by calling 211. You can also visit their website, and it's a myriad of services that they can, they can get, that are available to them from all around the United States. So that's a quick overview of the damage assessment process and what, what to expect in the next couple of weeks.
Any questions? Mr. Cronin?
Yes, sir.
Chris, I, I know the Coast Guard has closed down stretches of rivers before, okay, to, to, to nonessential boating or whatnot, because the wakes of the boats knocked the heck out of levees. I'm seeing recreational boaters putting in on 79 right now. Is, is there, what is the law? I think, is the Coast Guard, close that down?
The Coast Guard is involved, but those are not the navigable waters of the Mississippi River. Once they get out in the channel, the channel is closed.
Okay.
And the citizens do know that, and we've had a few calls in the middle of the night where they see boats coming across from Illinois, and the highway patrol and us are quickly out there, trying to find out what they, what they're doing.
So the channels are, so channels closed, okay?
Correct.
The quiver would be open, though. The quiver would be open though, right?
Correct.
Okay. If we wanted to do something to ban boats on the quiver or in the flood bottoms, that would be something to St. Charles County Council, Lincoln?
I don't know the answer to that question, but I can find out for you.
Yeah. Because that would solve a lot, that'd make your guys' job a lot easier, wouldn't it, if there was no boats except for emergency boats down there?
The difficulty in that is there's so much farmland out there that a lot of people live out there. You don't know if they're putting in to get on the quiver or if they're just putting in to get to their house. That might be the only way they can get to their house right now. So, it's pretty difficult. So, yes, sir.
Joe?
Yes, sir.
In ninety-three, we tried doing permits to keep track of the people coming out and it was just impossible to keep track of. So, the only way we can keep track is we have to intercept the boats and determine if they're legitimately. And we understand that people are checking on their property, their barns, whatever. So, we have, we have to intercept them. And Captain Hunt said, we're doing mutual patrols with our patrol over the water. They've just been phenomenally supportive. So, we're intercepting mutual patrols and we're also, obviously, the air support unit is flying and calling in when they spot boats. But we tried to pass this and that didn't work in ninety-three.
Thank you.
We have a significant amount of patrol cars, marked patrol cars up in these areas that wherever traffic is, we're running people out that don't belong there.
How many cases of looting have you, have we found?
We had six reports on the, before we could get officers responded up there. But since then, we've had no report. When I say looting, they didn't make entry and they didn't steal anything. There are reports of suspicious people. We made one arrest down in Portage. A guy was trespassing. So, they arrested him for trespassing on property. We believe the intent was to burglarize the house, but we were able to get to him before he did that. So, the looting calls or the suspicious people calls, since we've been up there, have really been reduced.
Mr. Brazel?
Oh, Chris, the wine business state, a lot of them are, their businesses drastically down from the roads are being closed. So, Joanne replied to us that there will be assistance possibly available in what you referred to. At what point will that be that they, do we got to wait to see how long the roads are going to be closed for?
No, that's all contingent on FEMA and whether or not the president declares a disaster. Once he does, then those services and that assistance will be available probably for your, what you're talking about through the SBA.
Well, you, but don't you need, you said you need the numbers to get so high.
We're there. We've exceeded that. We're there. We're, yes, sir. We're there. We've exceeded the amount of damage. So, it's pretty much now FEMA here, is here to verify the numbers to say, yeah, they've met their threshold. And then to go back to the White House and say, we need to declare this a disaster.
Okay. And then how did we do over the weekend with the road being closed and the violators? Did we have a lot of them?
So, down on Highway F, we've been working with MoDOT. We have sent county police down and they have ticketed numerous people. I think the word is out now because Saturday was, I received no calls. I haven't received any calls since Friday, since we were out there patrolling those signs.
Any other questions, Dave?
Yeah, I just want to mention one problem area that I think the county needs to address. And I don't think it would be very expensive, but Highway Y before it gets to Lincoln County, that's the only way for a lot of people to get through to go to work, which has been closed. And I bet it's only, you know, two hundred feet across there where the, where the road, the road.
Is that where Chain of Rocks is?
Yes.
Is that Chain of Rocks? Okay.
And so, people having to drive, I guess, forty minutes.
They take, they have to take sixty-one into the county.
Yeah, instead. And even for emergency response, it would be nice if we could, and I don't think it'd be that expensive to raise that road and put some culverts in there so people can get through.
But again, that's, that's Highway Y. That's a state, state road.
Yeah, I understand. I don't know if there's anything we can do at the county level, but it sure would be nice.
Yeah, the state won't. Don't get me started.
Old Monroe, Old Monroe Fire Department did a nice job a weekend or so ago, right there south of the, of the bridge, letting people come through, had guys on either end with fire trucks set up. So, it was, that was appreciated by a lot of people that, that didn't want to make that extra thirty-minute drive. I had to go to the funeral this past week in Old Monroe at Marinole, okay? And it took, you know, I had to take the thirty-five mile round trip to get around that because there's no way you get through there now, okay? I could have got through there, but.
Get through there now. It opened up at four o'clock.
Yeah, get there now. Yep, there you go. You guys did a real good job. And just so you know too, just talking about the damage assessment, Dennis Wiss sent out a thing from Smart Field to all the tenants, myself included. And he estimated the damage in Smart Field alone was one point three million dollars. So, we've got some serious.
You know, to speak to that, and those are the actual physical damages, but the only thing that we can count is the actual insurance deductible. So, what we can count on that is a half a million dollars. So, five hundred thousand dollars for the deductible for insurance.
And I really feel sorry for him. I tried to, to just say, since something's out and so have other people out there to keep, because that guy worked his, his tail off improving that airport. And so did the Commemorative Air Force. And then had that water come up really.
I don't know any county employee that wants to work worse than him. He's been begging us to take him out by boat just to go to his office and it's underwater. He's just dying to go to work. So, yeah.
Anything else, gentlemen? County executives?
Chris, thanks to you and all the EMA people and the entire police department and everybody that's been working so hard. Man, how long has it been now? Five weeks?
It has. And they've been working around the clock for three weeks now.
Yeah.
Day and night. So, I appreciate you saying that.
You've been a great service to some of the individuals out there who've been working hard trying to, trying to save the levees. And ultimately, they weren't successful, but they sure made an effort. And you were right there with them. I appreciate that.
Thank you.
And Mr. Chairman, the only other thing I have in my report is to congratulate the chief on the, the job that his department did on the Angie Hausman case. And everybody was very, very excited to, to see that, see that done. And it's, it's no small achievement. And we certainly appreciate everything that, that your folks did. And we're very proud of you.
Absolutely. Very good. Thank you, Captain Hunt. And thanks for everything the police department does. I think the average citizen just doesn't realize what all the department does. So, thank you so much. Moving on to the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Those that oppose? The consent agenda has been approved. Next, we move on to Resolution Number nineteen dash zero-two.
Resolution Number nineteen dash zero-two, sponsored by council as a whole, a resolution recognizing and congratulating the St. Charles County Police Department Crime Lab and Forensic Services for their diligence, determination, and tenacity in developing additional evidence in the Angie Hausman case after twenty-five years.
Thank you. Any questions or comments?
Well, Captain Teefenbaum?
Yeah, I'd like to ask him to come forward and speak on that.
And Chief, I'm sorry.
No, no, I'm going to have Kenny Teefenbaum. He has questions that we can't answer.
I'll just give you a brief, very brief synopsis of this case. As it's been publicized heavily the last few days, it is a twenty-five-year-old case. This young girl was nine years old and was abducted in St. Anne. And her whereabouts were unknown for nine days until she was discovered in our county, deceased out in the Bush Wildlife Area. She did die of the elements. So, you can imagine a death like that. So, there has been literally hundreds of investigators that have worked on this case over the twenty-five years. Major case block was activated at, in the original, when the case started. And then over the years, there's been a lot of task force involved in this. So, there has been a lot of effort from multiple agencies. Our crime lab has been vital in getting a suspect in this case. And just to kind of give you a timeline, at the time when she was abducted, DNA was in its very infancy stages. It was around, but it wasn't used as investigative technique regularly. So, that wasn't really an option for us. That became a little more popular in the late nineties. And throughout the years, our lab has tested numerous samples in this case over, I think there's over four hundred of them, which is unheard of as far as DNA testing. A lot of people have asked, well, how come it took this long to find that? Well, DNA wasn't advanced in that, on color fabric, red dye would mess up the DNA testing. So, as tech, as technology advanced, they were able to do that. And that just became available over the last couple of years. And our lab, again, revisited this case. And at this time, we're successful. So, I can't say enough for their efforts and their tenacity in this case. It really gave us, provided us with this suspect. And it's, this is a high-profile case. They're getting recognized. But these scientists that work in our lab, it's a nationally accredited lab. They do this on a daily basis, clearing cases for us. And all around the metro area, there's people that submit evidence in that to our lab. So, that speaks volumes in the credibility for our lab.
Hey, Dave, why don't you invite him up and introduce him?
Okay. This is Lab Director Brian Hampton.
This is one of the scientists, Dan Fanstock.
And another one, scientist, Brian Cry.
Do you have any comments? You want to make any comments?
Sure.
Appreciate that.
Just a few thank yous. I want to thank the council. I think I mentioned this every opportunity I can get, just for your support for not just the police department, but for the science that the police department does. It's very much appreciated. I'd like to thank you in advance for your future support as we look at new technologies even beyond DNA, trying to solve some of these other issues as far as new drugs that appear and better ways to use firearm evidence to catch bad guys and those types of things. I'd be remiss if I didn't mention that there's three of us here, but it takes a team and our crime laboratory. We have two other individuals that are a vital part of making what these guys were able to do possible as well. As you can imagine, with a small group of people, wear multiple hats and it has to be teamwork. And I do want to point out again, the lead analyst on this case, the forensic scientist, was Brian Cry. He was the one that actually kept testing those little tiny pieces, just trying to find something that might develop a lead. And eventually, he did. And it was a piece of her underpants. It was no bigger than a pea, but it was one of hundreds of samples, as Captain mentioned, that he just stuck with it and was determined to find something if it was there. And I just want to applaud him for his efforts in this as well. Thank you.
Hey, why don't you guys stand? Do you guys stand in the middle?
All right. One, two, three.
We will, Chief. We'll get you, how many copies? You want framed copies? We'll get you, how many you want? You want five for the lab and one for your office?
Yes, sir.
Six copies with frames?
Like to acknowledge Mr. Lomar, because he has just been phenomenal as a prosecutor working on this. And he has been with us around the clock out there sometimes. So, just want to make some kudos to the prosecutor, because without his support and push, we wouldn't be this far along, because he's making our stuff go to work. So, thanks to Mr. Lomar also.
Wow. I get you.
Yes.
So, I just wanted to make a quick comment about that. So, if you watched that press conference, that was a hard press conference to watch because he walked you through all of the details. And those were heart-wrenching, especially if you have a daughter. But the education on where you guys are now compared to where you were just a couple of years ago, I was like everybody else, I guess. I mean, it's DNA, it's DNA. Cell advertising, not in science. It's probably good, I'm not. So, it's amazing just to watch all the changes that's come along. And like you said, a lot of it plays into luck of, I didn't know that once it's tested, it's gone. And you can never go back to it again. But, man, I applaud you for staying in there, your tenacity to keep coming back to that. I have no idea how often you go back and test cases that are a quarter of a century old. But God love you for doing it. And I appreciate all of you guys for the effort that you do. And Mr. Brazel and I see eye to eye on almost everything that comes before the council. What are you laughing at? But I, I wanted to shoot kudos out to Joe because as soon as this happened, he put in for this resolution to say thank you because we appreciate the opportunity. When this kind of stuff comes up to where we can say, attaboy, and we really appreciate you doing it. And I think it's important that we celebrate you guys and the success and the hard work that you do.
They have a cold case room. And there's homicide. Every homicide that's ever happened in St. Charles County that's never been solved, it still ticks in there. When the investigators go in to pull stuff out, Brian Hampton, the lab personnel, they're all the time going back at it. So, anyone who's lost a loved one in St. Charles County over the years in a homicide, it's not forgotten. We just keep plugging away as best as we can, as much as we can. And they just do a phenomenal job. Nothing makes us crazier than watching NCIS, especially these gentlemen. And it's like, well, they solved it an hour with commercials. So, they just do a phenomenal job. And again, as Brian said, without the support from Mr. Elmore's staff and you folks, we can't be keeping progressive as much as we are. And we have people lining up the door wanting to use St. Charles County's lab.
That's awesome.
Very good.
I will call the roll to approve Resolution Nineteen oh-two. Councilman Ehlum.
Yes.
Councilman White.
Yes.
Councilman Hammond.
Yes.
Councilman Hollander.
Yes.
Councilman Klinghammer.
Yes.
Councilman Cronin.
Yes.
Councilman Brazel.
Yes. Resolution Nineteen zero-two has been approved. And we move on to bills for final passage, beginning with Bill Forty-seven sixteen.
Bill Number Forty-seven sixteen, an ordinance amending the zoning district map of the county of St. Charles, Missouri by rezoning land from A agricultural district to C to general commercial district as per application CUR nineteen dash zero-two A.
Any questions or comments?
This is associated with the CUP that we failed. So, this would be a no vote.
Okay. Is there any other comments?
Same as before.
Okay. So, we read the title and call the roll?
Bill Number Forty-seven sixteen, an ordinance amending the zoning district map of the county of St. Charles, Missouri by rezoning land from A agricultural district to C to general commercial district as per application CUR nineteen dash zero-two A. Councilman White.
Yes. No.
Councilman Hammond.
No.
Councilman Hollander.
No.
Councilman Klinghammer.
No.
Councilman Cronin.
No.
Councilman Brazel.
No.
Councilman Ehlum.
No. Sorry, ma'am.
Bill Forty-seven sixteen has failed. And we move on to Forty-seven nineteen.
Bill Number Forty-seven nineteen, an ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute a subaward agreement between St. Charles County and the East West Gateway Council of Governments for receipt of grant-funded equipment and supplies from the twenty-sixteen Urban Area Security Initiative Grant Program to support emergency response in the St. Louis urban area.
Any questions or comments on Bill Forty-seven nineteen? Seeing none, read the title and call the roll.
Councilman White.
Yes.
Councilman Hammond.
Yes.
Councilman Hollander.
Yes.
Councilman Klinghammer.
Yes.
Councilman Cronin.
Yes.
Councilman Brazel.
Yes.
Councilman Ehlum.
Yes.
Forty-seventeen nineteen has been approved. And we'll build, move to Bill Forty-seven twenty-one.
Bill Number Forty-seven twenty-one, an ordinance creating a new chapter, two thirty-seven in the ordinances of St. Charles County, Missouri, OSCCMO, in order to regulate the sale of kratom and require a kratom seller permit.
Questions or comments on Forty-seven twenty-one?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to table Forty-seven twenty-one pending more work on this by Councilman Ehlum and Joanne Lakeham requested a little more time for clarifications of the enforceability of the bill as well.
Is there a second? Okay, there's been a motion on the second May. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those that oppose? And Forty-seven twenty-one has been tabled.
Can I make a quick announcement about that?
Yes.
Thanks, Joe, for jumping in on that. So, one of the things that has come up about us looking at kratom is St. Louis County and Jefferson County are interested in doing this as well. And I think the three counties are going to try and work together on this. As you know, Representative Christopher Nelly just ran out of time. He made it through all the committees. And he was ready to go to the floor for a vote when the session expired. But there's six million people in the state of Missouri. Is that about right, John?
Yeah.
I think we figured out between St. Louis County, St. Charles County, and Jeffco, we're looking at about one point seven five million of the state's population. So, I think if the three of us can come to some sort of agreement on how we're going to deal with this, we can really set the bar for the state of Missouri. And taking a third of the state's population is going to go in this direction. So, I appreciate you agreeing to table this and giving us some opportunity to look into it a little bit more.
Very good. Very good. With that, we'll move to Bill Forty-seven twenty-two.
Bill Number Forty-seven twenty-two, an ordinance relating to housing and community assistance and approving the twenty-nineteen annual action plan for St. Charles County, Missouri in its capacity as an urban county for fiscal year twenty seventeen through twenty nineteen under the Community Development Block Grant Program of the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development, HUD. Program of the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development, HUD, and authorizing the county executive to execute all documents or certifications required for submittal to HUD with the action plan, and further authorizing the county executive to execute the funding approval agreements that HUD shall require upon approving the 2019 annual action plan.
Very good. Any questions or comments on 4722? Seeing none, read the title and call the roll.
Bill number 4722, an ordinance relating to housing and community assistance and approving the 2019 annual action plan for St. Charles County, Missouri, in its capacity as an urban county for fiscal year 2017 through 2019, under the Community Development Block Grant Program of the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development, HUD, and authorizing the county executive to execute all documents or certifications required for submittal to HUD with the action plan, and further authorizing the county executive to execute the funding approval agreements that HUD shall require upon approving the 2019 annual action plan. Councilman Hammond.
Yes.
Councilman Hollander.
Yes.
Councilman Klinghammer.
Yes.
Councilman Cronin.
Yes.
Councilman Brazel.
Yes.
Councilman Ehlum.
Yes.
Councilman White.
Yes. Bill number 4722 has passed, and we move on to Bill 4724.
Bill number 4724, an ordinance providing for the establishment of the Complete Count Commission on the Census for St. Charles County with the sunset of September 30th, 2020.
Any questions or comments on 4724? Seeing none, read the title and call the roll, please.
Bill number 4724, an ordinance providing for the establishment of the Complete Count Commission on the Census for St. Charles County with the sunset of September 30th, 2020. Councilman Hollander.
Yes.
Councilman Klinghammer.
Yes.
Councilman Cronin.
Yes.
Councilman Brazel.
Yes.
Councilman Ehlum.
Yes.
Councilman White.
Yes.
Councilman Hammond.
Yes.
Bill number 4724 has passed, and we move on to Bill 4725.
Bill number 4725, an ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute a funding agreement with the East West Gateway Council of Governments for the Great Streets Project.
Any questions or comments on 4725?
Mr. Chair, after, I had some concerns about this bill initially, but I actually drove the area, and it's a long, it goes from the jail and justice center all the way down to near the turnaround is north. So it's a long stretch. I talked to Councilman Klinghammer, too, about it, and Amanda Brower said that any proposed projects down there would probably be county road board money, if county money at all. So I'm good with it, and I hope that, I share Mr. Klinghammer's enthusiasm, but hope that maybe it'll spur some redevelopment in that area.
Thanks, Joe. Appreciate that.
Any other comments? Seeing none, read the title and call the roll.
Bill number 4725, an ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute a funding agreement with the East West Gateway Council of Governments for the Great Streets Project. Councilman Klinghammer.
Yes.
Councilman Cronin.
Yes.
Councilman Brazel.
Yes.
Councilman Ehlum.
Yes.
Councilman White.
Yes.
Councilman Hammond.
Yes.
Councilman Hollander.
Bill 4725 has passed, and we move on to Bill 4726.
Bill number 4726, an ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute a CMAQ program agreement with the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission for the Gateway Greenlight Program, federal project, CMAQ-7302680.
Any questions or comments on 4726? Seeing none, read the title and call the roll, please.
Bill number 4726, an ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute a CMAQ program agreement with the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission for the Gateway Greenlight Program, federal project, CMAQ-7302680. Councilman Cronin.
Yes.
Councilman Brazel.
Yes.
Councilman Ehlum.
Yes.
Councilman White.
Yes.
Councilman Hammond.
Yes.
Councilman Hollander.
Yes.
Councilman Klinghammer.
Yes.
Bill number 4726 has passed, and we move on to Bill 4727.
Mr. Council, or Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I had concerns about bumping the IS director up to pay grades, and especially in times right now, we have pretty lean budget. I understand that the concerns that the administration had with trying to find the right applicant. And based on that, I do appreciate Mr. Watson preparing an amendment to that bill. But based on that, I'm willing to give, I understand, the seminar tonight, our work session was helpful, and I also appreciate Mr. Elman's defined definition of making a pay grade, so nobody wants to hire in at the higher end of the pay grade. So therefore, I think I'm going to change my mind and go ahead and forget about that amendment. Sorry, Mr. Watson, for all the extra work you did. But I'm going to ask Mr. Elman to kindly try to find somebody in the lower end of pay grade 308. Because I know we've got budget coming up, and we've got a lot of flood damage to repair, and I did get some sales tax information from Mr. Schnarr, and it's not as rosy as we'd like. So that being said, I'd like to withdraw the amendment and proceed from there.
All right. Very good. Do we need to have a concurrence?
We have a rhythm.
Actually, she'll need to read the title first.
All right.
And then if there's any more discussion, then read the title.
Bill number 4727, an ordinance amending Section 115.710 of the ordinances of St. Charles County, Missouri, OSCCMO, concerning the Personnel Administration Plan and amending the 2019 budget for positions within the St. Charles County Departments of Information Systems, Facilities Management, and Corrections.
So now would be the time you would withdraw?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
He didn't make them.
He never made it.
I never made it.
We just voted on this.
Yeah.
So is there any other questions or comments on the bill? Seeing none, read the title and call the roll, then.
Bill number 4727, an ordinance amending Section 115.710 of the ordinances of St. Charles County, Missouri, OSCCMO, concerning the Personnel Administration Plan and amending the 2019 budget for positions within the St. Charles County Departments of Information Systems, Facilities Management, and Corrections. Councilmember Brazel.
Yes.
Councilmember Ehlum.
Yes.
Councilmember White.
Yes.
Councilmember Hammond.
Yes.
Councilmember Hollander.
Yes.
Councilmember Klinghammer.
Yes.
And Councilmember Cronin.
Yes.
Bill 4727 has passed, and we're moving on to Bill number 4728.
Bill number 4728, an ordinance approving execution of cost apportionment agreement with the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission to coordinate the participation of St. Charles County in the cost of the commission's public improvement for I-70 in St. Charles County, which includes mowing and litter pickup along I-70 from the Warren County Line to the Missouri River, job number WMSCF18Q.
Questions or comments on 4728?
Mr. Chair, it's rare time that I have to eat crow twice in one night, but Gary, Gary Elmstead, yes, he called me and gave me an earful for about an hour about this. I did not like the idea of spending $80,000 to MODOT's highway two more times a year. That being said, Gary pointed out that this was a result of negotiations for a long period of time with MODOT. I wasn't aware of those negotiations, and that he thought that this would be, if we shut this down, it would be a lack of credibility for Gary Elmstead. That being said, I know Gary does a lot of work for the county that it's beneficial. Mr. Elman one time told me he was worth his weight in gold to St. Charles County. So that being said, I did not want to put Gary in a position of jeopardizing his ability to negotiate with MODOT on our behalf. And I'm generally supportive of any additional funding MODOT needs for taking care of our roads, including a fuel tax if it ever gets to the voters in a pure form. But so for that reason, I'm willing to approve this now. And even though, when I see those mores, I'll still think about that, what we could do out in Wentzville, that $84,000. But I understand the reason why Gary's pushed to fart, and I understand why it's important to him to do his job.
Very good. Any other questions or comments? Yes.
Mr. Chairman, just want Mr. Cronin to know that Mr. Elmstead, before he called, you called me to find out, is it okay if I called Joe? And I said, Gary, we have to listen to you go on and on. I don't see why Joe shouldn't have to as well.
Any other questions or comments on Bill 4728? Seeing none?
Bill number 4728, an ordinance approving execution of cost apportionment agreement with the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission to coordinate the participation of St. Charles County in the cost of the commission's public improvement for I-70 in St. Charles County, which includes mowing and litter pickup along I-70 from the Warren County Line to the Missouri River, job number WMSCF18Q. Councilmember Ehlum.
Yes.
Councilmember White.
Yes.
Councilmember Hammond.
Yes.
Councilmember Hollander.
Yes.
Councilmember Klinghammer.
Absolutely.
Councilmember Cronin.
Yes.
Councilmember Brazel.
Yes.
Bill 4728 has passed, and that concludes bills for final passage. And we move on to bills for introduction, beginning with Bill 4731.
Bill number 4731, requested by Mike Harlbert, sponsored by Dave Hammond, an ordinance amending the zoning district map of the county of St. Charles, Missouri by rezoning land from R3A medium-density residential district to C2 general commercial district as per application, CUR 19-03A.
This, John?
Yes, go ahead.
Do you want me to make a motion, John?
No, this is just on first reading.
But we continue this one as well, right? This wouldn't be the first reading, because this is the same one that doesn't have the package of information.
This is the rezoning piece of it.
But don't they go hand in hand?
Yes, but this is just the first reading, and we can deal with it.
Okay, okay.
Okay, all right.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments on this bill? Seeing none, let's move on to Bill 4732.
Bill number 4732, requested by Craig Tykowsky, sponsored by council as a whole, an ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission County Agreement, job number J6P3350/STP-7302669, for work and funding to support the construction of an interchange at Route 364 in Gudermuth Road.
Any questions or comments on 4732? Seeing none, let's move on to Bill 4733.
Bill number 4733, requested by Craig Tykowsky, sponsored by Joe Brazel, an ordinance vacating a portion of Schwayde Road pursuant to Section 228.160 RSMO and approving a settlement agreement related there, too.
Any questions or comments on 4733? Seeing none, move on to Bill 4734.
Bill number 4734, requested by Dave Todd, sponsored by council as a whole, an ordinance authorizing the execution of a St. Charles County Cybercrime Task Force Agreement to create and participate in an advisory committee to advise on operational and/or financial matters involving the St. Charles County Cybercrime Task Force.
Questions or comments? Seeing none, move on to Bill 4735.
Bill number 4735, requested by John White and Joe Brazel, sponsored by John White and Joe Brazel, an ordinance creating a new chapter, 212, Consumer Protection Regulations in the ordinances of St. Charles County, Missouri, OSCCMO, in order to establish restrictions related to wineries.
My comment on this is that when we first set up the wineries, and there wasn't anything in there to actually have penalties for businesses that call themselves a winery that really don't meet the definition of a winery. So all this does is add penalties for those offenders of that.
And then?
Mr. Cronin?
I was going to say that all the restrictions in here are stuff that we've already been doing. So the existing wineries, it doesn't have any negative effect on them. However, Donna, if you could, please let them know that we're talking about this. I don't know if we ever sent out a notice. I think we've sent it out to some of them, but we need to send it out to all of them, Southwest St. Charles County, so that they're okay with it. I don't think any of them will be not okay with it. I think it's a matter of, too, if they are a winery, if they're calling themselves a winery and they don't fulfill this, they'll just have to change their name to so-and-so vineyards or something, I guess.
Mr. Cronin?
I remember we debated this last time around, and I offered to be part of the winery police, but I never got that job, because I wanted to go around and sample the wine for free. But I do have one concern about this, and I did, I've been reading this. In the event that we have a major catastrophic loss of our crop of grapes for our region, okay, like, for instance, a late spring freeze, I mean, I would hope that the council could come back and quickly amend those regulations so that those folks would be able to sell wine produced outside the area, because they might need that to be able to survive, okay? So that being said, all the restaurant waitstaff they have, all the weddings they have planned, all the other things that happen in that region, if they would have a loss, this would pretty much shut them down, okay? So that's a concern I've got. I think if we could change the rules, if something like that would happen in a quickly, quick manner, that would be a question I have, I guess, for council.
Mr. Watson, could there be like a safety valve in there?
Yes, we can include it. You know, it's, I haven't dealt with this in some time, but I believe the Department of Agriculture has the power to waive that, that instance, because they deal with that at the state level as well. And so that, that might apply as well, but we can look into and include a provision that gets at what you're saying.
John, I fully understand the intent of this, but if we have a business out there that's calling themselves a winery now, even if they don't apply to be a winery under our zoning regulations, can we require them to change their name? I mean, just to me, it seems, I understand the intent of it, and I think the public is better served.
Yeah, this is drafted as a consumer protection ordinance, that they can't hold themselves out to the public, because the county has adopted an ordinance establishing what a winery, the term winery is defined, and what that incorporates into that term. So a business holding themselves out as a winery that's not complying is, in essence, misleading consumers of that product. And so the violation is for misleading the consumer who's purchasing that product.
And we can retroactively put that into effect.
What we're saying is, every time that they hold themselves out, when they're not complying with the definition, when they're holding themselves out to consumers and engaging in that business transaction as a winery, that's a violation of this ordinance.
However, I would make a comment, though, Mike, to answer your question. I did send, John, a list of questions, and he responded on those questions, that was, does this affect any existing wineries? And the answer was no, because I didn't want to have to deal with wineries coming in here with that very problem. So the way I understand it is, this ordinance does not, is not currently going to affect any existing wineries in the wine district, in my district. I don't know if there's other wineries, other places, but, because I didn't want to deal with that problem. But again, John, John and I, we've looked at this. I understand the intent. I'm just not sure how Mike's team is not, how are we going to know? And I'm just asking. I mean, this is what, this is what it says, but how are we going to know if they're buying grapes in Gaskinade County or St. Charles? You can't really, I just don't know how much teeth this is really going to have. But I understand the intent, but I don't know how realistic it is. And I'm just saying, you know, this is what it says now. We already say all this stuff, but we don't know what they're doing. How are we going to know that? Mike, do you guys count the grapes, or go out and look at the grapes, and how that works?
If I could respond just real quickly, it really, the reality of this is, it is for establishments in the county, in the unincorporated area, that are holding themselves out to consumers as a winery. And we know who, what establishments comply with the definition of winery through community development. So if they're complying through community development and under the definition have been allowed to be designated as a winery, they're not going to be impacted this at all, which is why the answer to your question is, established wineries right now will not be impacted by this at all. If someone is holding themselves out to consumers as a winery who have not satisfied all the obligations under the ordinance of being a winery, that then by definition, the way we would know is, is I suspect other wineries, which my guess is, what a lot of wineries are vigilant about, they're holding themselves out as a winery when, in fact, they don't comply with the requirements of being a true winery. And again, this is for consumer, this is a consumer protection bill, as much as anything.
So what you're saying, it would kind of be, it'll be policed by the winery industry itself?
I suspect they'd be highly motivated if they were holding out on their competitors and they weren't complying with the different things they were having to require.
Joe, I haven't been out there lately. Is Chandler Hill, where are they, what's the official name of Chandler Hill?
That's a good question, because I think it might be Chandler Hill Vineyards, isn't it?
I don't know.
I mean, I would go there Wednesday night. I must say, they have great chicken dinners on Wednesday night, but I don't know what it's called.
Are you advertising for it?
Chicken and wine, I'm guessing.
Chicken and wine.
Mr. Executive?
If I understand what was said, what was said earlier, we do not know of anybody that's in violation now. But the only way, the only way we would know is if somebody reported it.
Right.
So, so Joe, there may be all kinds of violations, and people make, if they come in and start reporting them, just to understand, we didn't know about them before, because nobody reported them, and we don't send people out there to really check.
I just, what I don't understand, Steve, is how are we going to dig into the books and say, okay, they sell 5,000 vials of wine and this many gallons of grape, you know, and say, how are we going to know? They did 300 tons of bottles.
I remember when we had this whole thing, the 50% rule, five or six years ago.
I know.
Well, Mr. Harlbert, do you have an idea?
I mean, this thing has been around so many times.
That, to me, looks like they're calling. That, to me, looks like they're calling themselves a winery.
So as I'm listening to this, so the, the problem is, we get a complaint, and so what we have to do is, we actually have to pull the auditor, or an audit from the finance department or from the audit department, to do an audit of their books to determine where the grapes are coming from, where they're purchasing those grapes, to measure that, that number.
Do we have the legal authority to do that? I'm just asking.
That, that's the problem that we've had, is we, we've had that complaint come to us, and we have to start to try to initiate that process. And since I've been here, we haven't gone that far.
So this initiates the, the ability to actually find out if, what the situation, is that what you're saying?
I, I do not know. I have not seen the ordinance, so I don't know.
Oh, okay.
Well, without a penalty, it'd be, it would be worthless to even go by.
Well, no, that's what I'm saying.
So it's, we need to do this.
It just gets to me really interesting between what's on their sign and what they're, what they purport themselves to be. Thanks to Jennifer, we now have access to the internet very quickly, and Chandler Hill is called the Vineyard, by the way, when you go there.
Yeah, I thought it was.
When you go there for chicken dinner. But if you go to their website, the very first page says, "The Winery." And it talks about the winery as a Tuscan-inspired with, you know, it, so is that calling themselves a winery or not? The sign says Vineyard, but the, the website says winery. So I don't know how, I'm not interested in passing something that we can enforce. I don't understand what the rule is. So.
I don't know.
We may need to work on this.
Maybe it needs to work. John was more interested in this bill than I was, I'll tell you that. I mean, and he's got a winery, so John.
No, I don't have a winery. I grow grapes, that's all. I'm not, I don't have a vested interest. But I, the reason I believe it's important that we do it now is so it puts, you know, if we do find somebody that's in violation, there is a penalty for it. Before, we didn't have a penalty.
Yeah. So I guess my question then would be, if they say winery on their website, are they purporting themselves to be a winery? Or does it have to say winery on their sign?
I think that's a question we should ask them, and if they realize there's penalties, maybe they'll change their website.
It's got to be in the language of the ordinance though, John.
Yeah.
Well, the, the ordinance states if you're proposing to be a winery, and they are proposing just through their website, so it looks like they're in violation.
May I suggest that we spend a little more time doing some clarifying work and, and clean up the language that we know we want in there, and then we'll tackle this bad boy in two more weeks.
All right.
Well, this is just first reading.
Yeah. Let's do that. That's fine. Good suggestion.
Are you suggesting Mike do that?
Yes.
Oh, I thought you meant me.
Mike, if you'd like some help going out to check out the grapes, I hear Joe Cronin would like to drive out there with you.
Let's try to anticipate.
Well, I'll drive out, but we'll Uber back, Mike.
Just want to point out, though, the ordinance is not drafted with any responsibility for the Department of Community Development. This is not in any chapter that they have responsibility for, and enforcement of this ordinance is entirely the county councilor. So if you want any involvement or participation from community development, can you indicate that? Otherwise, Mike has no interest in this ordinance as drafted. It's entirely John.
Okay.
I think John Watson wrote this bill so he can go out there. Sorry, I'm just kidding.
All right. We'll do some work on it and see what we can do. All right, if there is any further on 4756, then that concludes.
No, no.
4736 is next.
Oh, 4736, okay, very good.
Bill number 4736, requested by Joe Cronin, sponsored by Joe Cronin and Terry Hollander, an ordinance amending section 230.010 and creating section 309.110 ordinances of St. Charles County, Missouri, OSCCMO, regarding safety regulations for ice cream trucks.
All right. Questions or comments? I'd just like to, thanks, Councilman Cronin, for doing his research on this, and, and it seems like it's not that expensive to bring, to make these ice cream trucks a lot safer for our neighborhood.
Absolutely.
Very good. Appreciate the effort. Mr. Executive?
I haven't checked. Does this have a, a section to deal with ice cream trucks that don't actually sell ice cream? That sell some kind of substitute instead?
Do we need to have a definition of what is ice cream? Is that what you're saying? Custard is not included in this?
They got food trucks.
I think we need to work on this a little bit more. All right, is there anything else? Mr. Cronin?
Just a real brief history, I guess, of this. The mayor of Winsfield contacted me because there was a tragic accident in Winsfield last year. A beautiful little three-year-old girl got run over by an ice cream truck and lost her life. And Winsfield attempted to write a bill, but it was a tough bill, and Winsfield looks like a piece of Swiss cheese. You've got unincorporated pockets all over it, so it was tough for them to enforce as well. So I, I would like to shout out to Bob for Kona Ice, and also Chris from Frosty Treats. The two guys actually brought ice cream trucks from their respective businesses to this parking lot. And county health department staff was there, county attorneys were there, and we, we talked to them about what would work for them. We don't want to put those ice cream trucks out of business, we just don't want any more little girls run over. So after that, a list of requirements came out. I went to, myself and Claire, sent out this information to every ice cream truck vendor that serves St. Charles County, and we have no objections to it.